Chair Gibson, the next item number 65 is also related to item number 69. So if I may, I'd like to read both 65 and 69 together.
Thank you.
Item 65 is to conduct a public hearing to approve, adopt, and authorize the chair to sign an ordinance to amend Title 16, Chapter 16.11, Section 16.11.020, and Section 16.11.040 of the Clark County Code, to clarify the definition of crosswalk to include pedestrian overpasses and underpasses, and to prohibit obstructive uses in, on, or within 20 feet of a touchdown structure, providing for other matters properly related thereto, and take other action as appropriate. Item number 69 is to approve and adopt an updated no obstruction use zone map for Las Vegas Boulevard between Russell Road and Sahara Avenue in accordance with Clark County Code 16.11.050 to include pedestrian overpasses along Las Vegas Boulevard as no obstructive zones and the areas in, on, or up to 20 feet from the landing area of touchdown structures associated with pedestrian overpasses.
Thank you. I think the best way to proceed then would be for the attorneys to share with us what this is and maybe what it is not. Would you do that for us, please, Lisa?
Yeah, Lisa logs them for the record. So this ordinance amends Chapter 16.11 to update the definition of crosswalk by clarifying the current reference to above or below grade structures to include the pedestrian overpasses and underpasses. The ordinance also adds a new definition for touchdown structures, which includes the elevators, escalators, and stairways associated with the pedestrian overpasses. The ordinance adds touchdown structures and the landing areas, which could be included in no obstruction use zones if permitted by an updated map. This ordinance does not amend the definition of obstructive uses, which allows for First Amendment activity. So basically, this amendment does not infringe on any of the First Amendment protections. In addition to this ordinance change, under item 69, which was also read, staff is recommending that the board update their no obstruction zone map to include the pedestrian overpasses and the associated touchdown structures as crosswalks due to the significant threat and degradation of the pedestrian safety caused by obstructive uses on the pedestrian overpasses. Again, thereby prohibiting only obstructive uses on the pedestrian overpasses, and this does not prohibit any protected First Amendment speech. We also have Metro here today to provide a presentation detailing the pedestrian safety concerns and the degradation to pedestrian public safety that is resulting on the pedestrian overpasses on the strip.
Captain Bitsko and whomever else is with you, would you please come forward?
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here to present to you guys. As we know, the Las Vegas resort corridor and Las Vegas in general is seeing an increase in tourism. January and February, we saw more than 2.2 million more visitors in 2022 than we did in 2021. With more people on the strip, there are more people using pedestrian bridges as a safe way to cross the strip. But unfortunately, the pedestrian bridges are far from safe. They have become a very dangerous part of Las Vegas, one that our tourists have to use to cross the street. Some of the crimes, the felony crimes that are occurring on these bridges, we've seen murders, stabbings, shootings, battery with substantial bodily harm, robberies, larcenies from person, arson, narcotic sales and use, sex crimes, to include open and gross lewdness, and also firearm-related crimes. The stagnation of movement on the pedestrian bridges is causing opportunity for these crimes. So what happens is the bridges are becoming obstructed by multiple sources. And when crowds form on these bridges, it creates the opportunity for criminal activity. And our officers with the LVMPD, in attempting to enforce the obstructive uses and no obstructions, they're impeded by the confusing nature of the ordinance and also it's why we need the no obstruction zone map amended as is going to be presented today. Because of their elevated position, it is difficult for our officers at street level to see the crimes occurring. The bridges are dimly lit, and during an emergency, if obstructed, there's only one way on and off of these bridges. So if our tourists have to get off quickly, any obstruction on these bridges, that causes a threat to the public safety as well. If the stagnation of the pedestrian flow on the bridges is not addressed, the bridges are going to become pedestrian barriers, and that will force our pedestrians to then jaywalk across Las Vegas Boulevard, creating another public safety issue as well. They're made for walking, not for stopping and blocking. Our aim is not to issue tickets or conduct enforcement, but really have the opportunity to first issue a warning and remove the confusion around what our officers can do and what they can enforce. The stagnation of movement on the bridges is resulting in a significant threat to and the degradation of the safety of our pedestrians. So I'm going to turn it over to my Area Command Intelligence Officer, Monica Allness, and she's going to be able to give the presentation and show some of the issues that I'm talking about, and then I'll come up to close.
Good morning. My name's Officer Monica Allness. I work at the Convention Center Area Command for LVMPD. I'm going to be showing you a series of pictures and videos today that really showcase our issue that we're having up on those pedestrian bridges, starting with this series of images. So you'll see circled in yellow, these are some people that are immobile. They're not using the bridge to actually actively cross from one side to the other over Las Vegas Boulevard. They're stationary. You can also see these lines. So it just takes one or two people, sometimes even one, just to minimize the actual width of the bridge itself and the useful space where somebody can come and go freely and use that pedestrian bridge for pedestrian travel. You'll also see this elevated position itself in this very unique structure, which is the pedestrian bridge. It is above grade. Officers, we operate most of the time at grade. So that means, at the street level, we're on the sidewalks. It's hard for us to see the actual activities that are taking place when we're down there on the street, and somebody might be stationary, sitting, sleeping, whatnot, and carrying out any kind of activity up on that bridge. It's also unique, and it's sort of like an alleyway, that you could say. It's an enclosed space. There's only one way in, and there's one way out of this area. It's very condensed. It makes people be very close with one another. Sometimes having these individuals that might be sitting and reducing the size of the pedestrian walkway, that could cause an issue. That could cause some disruptions. And it does turn into a hotspot for crime because it does allow more interactions between people, which crime could result from this. So we do see some unique things up on the bridge. For example, animals. Dogs is something common that we see up on the bridge. Sometimes they're on leash, sometimes they're not on leash. Even when they are on leash, they might be wandering to and fro across the bridge. You can see this gentleman wearing the red. His only option is to either walk over the dog in this picture, or of course, go around. If he's going around that dog, he's going to be face-to-face with oncoming pedestrian traffic. And again, that does cause an obstruction, and that is a threat to public safety. You'll also see circled, the small children there are about to come face-to-face with these animals. Again, this is causing an issue, and it is a threat to public safety. We see soliciting and selling items very often as well. People will erect their tables, they'll bring their water coolers out, they'll sell to individuals. Again, the transaction that's happening between somebody that might be buying one of these items, that again, causes a stagnation of pedestrian flow, and therefore, it opens up an opportunity for either crime or for just impeded pedestrian flow altogether. This is a video. You can see the individuals, they're walking around. This gentleman who's selling the shirts. And they're walking around the woman who's actually purchasing a shirt. So again, this is an obvious example of how that really does reduce the walking path for people that are trying to use those bridges. We see showgirls and sign holders also. This is very common. You'll notice here with these lines, the showgirls that are standing there, they are immobile. They're not using it to cross back and forth across the Boulevard. They are just mobile, or sorry, immobile in place. But you can see that the pedestrian bridge has also been reduced in size just because of them standing there. Usually, there's always a couple more people as well that are stationary on the bridge at any given time. And this green portion, this shows that the pedestrians, they really only have two choices. They have to bottleneck on the right side to continue their pathway across the bridge, or they would have to go into oncoming pedestrian traffic to keep traveling across that bridge. And again, for us, this does show a degradation of public safety. These people are going to be forced to be face-to-face in a close proximity with other people. This allows for negative interactions and other issues to arise. I will warn you, the following slides and videos, they do show a lot of extreme violence, some sexual acts, lewd acts, nudity, et cetera. So I just do warn you that that content is going to be visible.
Could I just ask while you're starting that?
Yes, sir.
This is just the normal video that is shot all the time, the security video that is on the bridges, right? This isn't somebody stationed up there to get this for us?
Yes, sir. This is Fusion Watch video. Yes, sir. So here, you'll see this individual is urinating on the bridge, and you'll notice how people avoid this person. And they come in contact with other people on the other side. It's oncoming traffic. It creates a blockage, it creates a hindrance for people that are trying to cross that bridge. We see a lot of narcotic-related activities that are up on the bridge as well. These gentlemen above in those slides, it's day or night. They appear to be using narcotics up on the bridge. This individual is holding a knife. And there's syringes that are also strewn out across the pedestrian bridge. These are hotspots for crime. They're dimly lit, it's somewhat like an alley. This individual, they were pickpocketed multiple times within about a 10-minute timeframe of each other. This individual is holding a knife. We also see lewd acts and indecent exposure. This has been something that we've been seeing quite often lately. I'll go to this video. It's a longer video, but it shows a lot. I'd like you to take notice of this woman in the black. Right before this video starts, she actually goes up the escalator, appearing to want to cross the bridge, but she sees this man who's completely nude with his genitals exposed. She sees him, and she actually goes back down the other escalator. So it could be assumed that she's trying to avoid this and not use the pedestrian bridge because of his presence. Again, he's completely nude. You'll notice this gentleman in the black shirt. He approaches him. He appears to be putting some kind of cash on the ground next to him. They have an interaction. You'll see the little girl pass by right now with her family. It's assumed that she would be able to see his genitals completely with how he's completely naked. And you can see this man's reaction is negative to him. He's shaking his head, he looks back. And this just shows, when somebody is immobile, when there's an activity that's happening up on the bridge, and it's not being used for passage, an active passage across the street, it's almost like a moth-to-the-flame effect. You'll see another man approaching this gray shirt. He has an interaction with this individual now. The man with the hat, he's pulling up his phone. We can assume he might be wanting to take pictures or video this because it's a very bizarre situation. The man's completely nude. And you'll actually notice the man in the gray, he appears to actually bend down and pick up the money that was dropped by the other gentleman. He'll dip down, he'll put something in his pocket. And then in turn, these two individuals start to have an interaction with each other. And it's a negative experience for everyone. We also see three card monte, table games. This is something unique. They're oftentimes setting up their table games on a pedestrian bridge. For anyone that's not familiar of what a table game is, it usually involves a crew of five to 10 people. There's usually decoys, individuals that are pretending to play the game to actually lure in people to play with them and draw a crowd. There are spotters that are actively looking for police to actually approach so they can tip off their crew. And then there's the dealer. Again, they operate on the pedestrian bridges because they have an elevated position where they can see police coming, and they can be able to disperse before we're able to make contact. I'll warn you, this is a violent video. So this interaction happened last year. Our pedestrians, they entered the pedestrian bridge, they were walking over the pedestrian bridge, and they started to have a verbal altercation with individuals involved in those table games. Our victims are going to be the gentleman in the gray hooded sweatshirt, the woman that's holding the yellow bag, and the other man that has the black sweatshirt that's going to be approaching. And these victims were kicked and punched multiple times in the head. If you pay attention to the man wearing red, you'll see him kick both of the males in the head. And the woman's being punched in the face. Again, this interaction happened because there was something stationary up on the bridge. It just wasn't free-flow pedestrian traffic. This interaction occurred from them having the table game up on the bridge. This is another fight from last year. Again, you'll notice how dimly lit the bridges are, how it forces people to come in each other's paths. This appears to be multiple pedestrians that are involved in this. And this victim, he gets punched multiple times in the head, kicked multiple times in the head by different pedestrians. You'll see him get kicked in the head again, and then this individual punches him multiple times in the face. And he appears to be unconscious. And you'll notice the other individuals that were walking from the opposite side of the bridge, now they're involved with this interaction. They're forced to be involved with this interaction. This is a stabbing that occurred last year. So you'll notice in the very top, there's an individual in the mobility scooter, and there's an individual wearing the pink pants. So the man in the mobility scooter, he actually quickly gets up, and you'll see him stab that person that's wearing those orange shorts in the abdomen one time. And then you'll notice that victim check his wound. That was the stabbing, and you'll see the victim check his wound. And this victim, he actually ended up going down into the street in vehicular traffic to actually ask people for help. And you'll see him come into frame two and pull up his shirt. You can see where he's bleeding. This is an unprovoked fight resulting in death. I know it's a little bit of an elevated position, but you can see here in this circle, that's a group of individuals that are just standing stationary on the bridge. So they're not using it to come and go. They're there, they're congregating. And our victim, they walked through that group of individuals. The victim's going to be approaching those escalators on the south portion of the bridge. And our suspect is going to be running right now across the bridge and going down that staircase. You'll notice too, that group that's still up on the bridge, they're going to move their position so they can see the interaction that happens below. So now our suspect is down at the bottom of the bridge, or the escalator, rather. And our victim just got down the escalator. He gets struck in the head, and unfortunately, he passes away. And you'll see the suspect actually goes back up the escalator and the stairs. Activities in the elevators has become something very unique. This is commonplace. People, they treat them as kind of their personal apartments. They sleep, they meet each other in there, whatnot. You can see the tourists that are up on the left-hand corner. This is something that we commonly see. They're forced to have this interaction with people when they're just simply trying to use the elevator. This individual's in the elevator for an extended period of time. Up on the top, you can see that he's injecting himself with an unknown narcotic. On the top right, he's masturbating. He was masturbating on and off for an hour and a half. He had about 10 to 12 interactions with people that came in that elevator at that time and observing this. And down below, you'll see this man picks up the syringe that he was actually using in the top left and puts it back down. And if you notice, just the look on these people's faces, that they're forced to have to interact with this and be in a cigarette-filled elevator as they're going down. This individual's lighting fires. He actually lit two fires in two different elevators that day. But we see a lot of this. We also see people, they defecate inside the elevators, they urinate in the elevators as well. And that becomes a major issue as well for the cleaning crews that are out there. Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to turn it back to Captain Bitsko.
So a lot of the people that you saw these crimes were committed were arrested. But our goal, again, is to be able to start with a warning to move people along because as these crowds gather on these bridges, it creates the opportunity for some of the crimes that you saw. But we have hours and hours and hours of video like this. So when it does rise to enforcement, as I spoke, or as we saw earlier, we have the Community Impact Court, which is a small intimate court with a Clark County judge, where we can divert people from the criminal justice system into resources. So it's not just arresting our way out of a problem. But as you see, these are a problem, and we're asking for the commission to deem the pedestrian bridges as no obstruction zone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Do you guys have any questions?
Commissioner Naft or Jones? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I know we'll have questions about the policy that's before us, but I think we probably can't proceed without at least having a conversation about the social services work that we're providing. Mr. Schiller could probably speak better than that. But Captain, I've, in the past year with your predecessor over there, I've walked the strip, I've seen some of the social service elements. We've done a regular work with help of Southern Nevada, and I don't know if they're here to speak to that partnership, but maybe Kevin, if you could.
Commissioners, I'd just echo, we have multiple partnerships, help with Southern Nevada, one of the largest, as you know, with our MCIT intervention and ongoing efforts. And I think that's been the constant, I guess I would say, over the last three to four years. We've continued to do that, but we actually increased our staffing related to that MCIT about two years ago, and continue to provide ongoing intervention to try to really intervene specific in conjunction with social service. And then also, as you're aware, interceding with Metro related to that response so that we can get them into Housing and Treatment Services. And we've actually been increasing that pretty significantly over the past six months.
Captain, has that partnership, since you've been at Convention Center Area Command a couple of months now, has that partnership, aside from this policy that we're considering today, could you speak a little bit more to that? Is there, obviously, there's more work we need to do. But how has the interaction been for you and your officers?
It actually has been very, very good and very effective. We do have, every shift has intervention officers, which are trained to work with those resources that were mentioned. So I have officers on each shift that are out walking the pedestrian bridges. We're covering them 24 hours a day right now. And those officers, they have the training. We have CIT. We have the Critical Response Team with the county that does respond to people with addiction, the unhoused, mentally ill, our homeless outreach team with LVMPD. So we discuss daily in our briefings, not just to go out and make arrests, but how are we offering services to our unhoused or mentally ill and to those that suffer from addiction? Because we know that, again, it's not just the arrest that's going to solve the problem. It's how we're offering resources and how we get these people that need them, the resources, so we can solve the problem so they're not back out in 10 hours causing the same problems.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. And I sort of thought I knew what this was about today, but I'm a little confused. Can you give me a little more direction in looking back through Chapter 16.11? Of the examples that you put up today, I could certainly see how this ordinance would help. And some of those others, I wasn't really sure how. Like with the stabbing, from what I could tell, it was a gentleman in a wheelchair who was just wheeling himself down the pedestrian bridge, got up and stabbed somebody. So in a situation like that, how would this change to the code of health?
So what we've seen, and what we've seen in the past, is when there's stagnation of movement, and we have crowds that are forming on these pedestrian bridges, that lends to these negative interactions that Officer Allness talked about, is we're forcing crowds together, which create fights, which create issues. Now, the no obstruction zone, the obstructing law on the sidewalk currently, like if we're going to be down on the sidewalk, not up on the pedestrian bridges, is we have to show that an obstruction occurred and that there was a significant threat to public safety because of that obstruction. What we're asking on this no obstruction zone is the pedestrian bridges themselves are creating this significant threat because of the crimes that we're seeing, the stabbings that we're seeing, is we need people to move along and not obstruct our pedestrians. And that's the intent of adopting the map to cover the bridges. So we have that ability to enforce the no obstructing.
So how is that different from, sorry, Lisa?
Yeah, let me just clarify a little bit. So in order to be a no obstruction zone, there are two things the county needs to prove. So either it goes, it decreases pedestrian traffic to a certain level of service, or there's a threat to public safety. And so here, we're trying to designate the pedestrian bridges as a no obstruction zone based on pedestrian safety. That still allows for First Amendment protected speech to occur up there. It doesn't prohibit, you know, standing around or things like that. But what it does prohibit, it is the eight defined obstructive uses in the current code. So just to clarify that.
Okay, but if somebody's just going down the pedestrian bridge, gets up and stabs somebody, I don't understand how that, how would that have helped there?
So that's probably not the best example of what this would be. But this is more for like what they showed as far as the card table gathering around, all of those, other those kind of things. But in what we're hoping to with, by designating these as no obstruction zones, there will be posted signage and things like that informing the public that this is an area where you can't be obstructing the flow of pedestrian traffic. So we're hoping, you know, education for the community and signage will also help with that, any potential congregation of people and things like that.
How do you, I mean, it seems like, I'm looking at 16.11.040, 020E, which defines obstructive use. I mean, several of them are pretty obvious. Sleeping on public sidewalk, placing, erecting, and unpermitted fixed sign. And then there's Sub 7, which says obstructing, delaying, hindering, blocking, hampering, or interfering with pedestrian passage, which seems more subjective, right? I mean, if my family and I are on the pedestrian bridge, and we stop to look at the Bellagio fountains versus some of the stuff that's been shown here today, how do, how do we make sure that that's different? I mean, that's exactly what's happening on sidewalks down on the Boulevard right now. Obviously, people walking by the Bellagio fountains will be congregating there every 15 minutes. So I guess I'm trying to understand how that distinction is made.
I mean, I think this is part of interpreting the statute or the code, but I mean, it really goes to whether or not you're interfering with the pedestrian passage. So if you're up against the side of the bridge, taking a photo or something like that. But if you've got maybe a group of 50 people that are doing that kind of thing that starts causing people to go around you, then I think at that point, Metro could give the, can we please keep moving and designate to the no obstruction zone that we need to keep this area freestanding as long, you know. But you could be up there doing those things as just not interfering with the pedestrian passage.
And Commissioner, I think it comes down to reasonableness and how we train our officers moving forward from here too, is somebody setting up a camp and literally taking a bath with wipes is different than a family stopping for 15 seconds. And we will train our officers to ensure that moving forward with this is, there is that reasonableness that is applied to that, an officer discretion.
Okay. Commissioner McCurdy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the presentation. We certainly appreciate the work that our officers do each and every day to maintain public safety, not only for our tourists, but also for our community. And I'll begin there. there. We have to, you know, collectively evaluate, you know, is this going to be the policy that we want to move ahead, ahead with to help achieve the goals that have been outlined here today, but also create an opportunity for there to be clear guidance from us to our offices, to the, you know, to the rank and file, to be able to enforce this law. And from the sounds of it, especially, you know, with listening to my colleague, I don't know that we're actually clear. So, I want to make sure that we get some data presented to us today as to what we're seeing on our bridges. I did see the video clips, they're horrendous. If there were, you know, tourists watching today, I apologize for them seeing that, and that's precisely why you're here today, to make sure that we identify more tools to improve our public safety, correct? So, can you let us know what the data looks like in terms of how many incidents we're seeing, how many are, you know, acts of violence versus acts of lewdness, indecent exposure, and so forth, just so that we can have a better picture as to what's really going on and what will we be able to measure against with advancing this policy with adding another tool in our tool belt? And I have a few more questions.
Okay, yeah, I can definitely get that data for you.
So, we don't have data here today?
I don't have the specific crime numbers of the bridges.
Okay, so, I think we're definitely going to need to see that, just so that we're able to measure the effectiveness of this policy. But can you walk us through some of the tools that you currently have available to you and how we are applying those tools today?
Okay, so currently for our officers, when we go up on the bridges is, without that being deemed a no obstruction zone, they have to prove not only that a person is obstructing the flow of pedestrian traffic, but also how that creates a danger to the public. So, that's, especially in a pedestrian bridge that's closed off like that, that's very difficult to do, and honestly, it's confusing for our officers, which is why the signage that would be associated with this, this change and the designating it a no obstruction zone would make it clear not only for our officers, but for the tourists and the pedestrians that are on the bridges. Because right now, it's just we have inconsistent signage or no signage, and to prove that is extremely difficult for our officers. We heard the attorney talking about levels of service as part of the statute for us to enforce, but again, how do I have my rank and file patrol officer to describe levels of service on a pedestrian bridge to establish probable cause, to make an arrest or even move somebody along or conduct a probable cause stop?
And you would say that the goal of this, as was stated, is to decrease stopping and blocking, correct?
Yes, is to stop the, to stop the stagnation of movement on the pedestrian bridges so we don't have these large crowds that generate, which is leading to the violent crime and some of the crimes that we saw today.
Which leads me to the idea that, you know, it was, it was a question raised earlier, you know, we have our union entities, you know, Culinary, for example, who often, you know, march and, you know, speak their opinions on what's happening within some of their workplaces, and oftentimes, they do utilize, you know, the bridges as well. It would probably be, you know, pretty well recognized that they would probably slow the traffic. In this case, what then would happen with that then, you know, convolute what we're trying to achieve? Just as an example, how would that go? Could you speak to that, Lisa?
Yeah, exactly. So, as you can see from the definitions in obstructive use, and then there's also a definition of permitted obstructive uses, and, and it includes conduct that's arguably protected by the National Labor Relations Act. So, the conduct of unions or protesting or any of those types of thing is actually accepted from that definition of obstructive use. So, will be protected under the code.
And since we don't have the data here with us today to, you know, take a look at, you know, the violent crimes versus, you know, the misdemeanors, is there anyone that could speak to the amount of, so we don't have any arrest rate data as well, right?
No, I do not have the number of arrests today with me.
Okay, so, we don't have that. All right, so, all right, let's speak to things that we can control. Dimly lit bridges, has there been any proposal or recommendation made from Metro or, you know, our resort partners to speak to how we can increase the lighting on the bridges so that you can better see on the bridge?
I would have to speak with Public Works on that, to see if that's something that we can do.
Is Dennis here?
Dennis, Department of Public Works. As far as the lighting go, we have known of certain areas where that, in enclosed areas such as the stairway at Harmon Corner, we have added additional lighting. We do have handrail lighting in some of our, our bridges, and it does get broke, and we've looked at different types of materials to keep those from getting broke. But as, to ask for an increase in intensity directly, we haven't received that, but we can certainly look at that and add, see where we can add the additional lighting.
Would, are there any impacts to the traffic with increased lighting?
Uh, no, I, we don't believe that. We use more directional lighting that would shine down on the bridge deck rather than, and spill, than spill over into traffic. But there's a lot of ambient lighting in a lot of these corners with their LED type billboards and their marquees, so we see a lot of that. To measure it is going to be somewhat difficult, but we can, we'll do some measurements and make a determination as to what we can do to increase the intensity.
Thank you so much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ruth Miller. I'm Assistant General Counsel with LVMPPD, and I just wanted to make, maybe add some clarification. First of all, the pedestrian bridges already, the Tropicana Bridge is already deemed a no obstruction zone, and it's at certain hours. What we're asking, because the stagnation of the movement, we want all of the bridges to be deemed as no obstruction zones. And how this, I think the confusion with the ordinance is, it's not an ordinance made for enforcement, it's an ordinance that's ambitious and it has, it's more advisory. So, when you try to look at enforcing the ordinance, it becomes confusing for our officers. And it is going to be difficult to tie on the pedestrian bridges, certain data, because it's not a call for service area. We may be able to give you overall statistics of the crime on the strip, but pinpointing it too specifically to the bridge is going to be difficult because you don't get calls, you know, it's either officers are patrolling the area and they observe a crime, there isn't anybody calling for service at, on the bridge. So, the data may be difficult to get what you want. If you want overall crime statistics on the bridge, that would be easier for us to obtain.
On the strip or on the bridge?
On the strip.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think that that is the type of data that we would need to see, especially if we were going to move this type of policy forward, because our goal is to maintain the health and safety, certainly the public safety of not only, you know, our tourists, but also our community members. So, you know, one request that I would have, you know, the board desires to continue to move this conversation along, is that we have some data that we will be able to point to if in case that there, you know, is a reevaluation of how the policy is working. We have to make sure that, you know, we continue to keep our bridges safe because certainly, you know, this is not what we want at all here in, on the strip. But how is it that we are going to consider this if we don't really intend to enforce it? Or can you just clarify that a little bit?
Well, I think you want, it's the stagnation of the movement which is creating opportunities for the crime, and what's unique about the bridges, it's different than a sidewalk, is because it's elevated, because it's secluded, because it's dimly lit, there are, that allows more opportunity of crime to occur there. People can commit crimes and be not seen in the crowd. It's a unique situation. It can't really be analyzed as if it's a sidewalk because of the uniqueness of it.
So, what's current?
And we want to create a free flow. We're not saying somebody can't stop or sit there, but what we are saying is if you start to block any kind of movement, then potentially, there can be enforcement, which is really what we want to do, is warn and change the behavior of the pedestrians on the flow to create the flow.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm actually, I was actually still going.
Okay.
I just feel like it would...
Just one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few final thoughts. Just, I think it's important to gain clarity, especially with this consideration. So, it is, I guess, I would like to know, please educate the board on what's currently being done to intensify, you know, the security efforts near and around the bridge.
Currently, I have every bridge intersection covered by two officers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They are patrolling, conducting stops, looking for crimes, conducting proactive stops. However, if we have people stopped sitting, some of the, some of the situations that you guys were able to see on the video, which is just a small percentage of the video, and I mean, that's what we see every day on those bridges, sometimes our officers ask someone to move along and they say no, and our officers don't have the ability to, you know, conduct any kind of enforcement with that, even if they are obstructing without being able to articulate why that's a safety hazard, which is why the no obstruction zone is so important, because it is a significant drain on my resources as well, as my officers are covering these bridges 24/7 without the ability to conduct enforcement on them.
And this is the last question, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. So, currently, when we do have someone that's sitting on the bridge, urinating on the bridge, you're saying that we can't do anything about that? Or even nude on the bridge, we can't do anything about that?
Well, so, the gentleman that was nude was arrested. We do have, if they urinate on the bridge, yes, but to be able to conduct enforcement on the initial stagnation that's causing it, to move people along, to warn people, we can't. We have to wait until the crimes that you see occur before we can do anything.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize to my colleague for, I'm just, I feel that it's important that maybe the history kind of be told as to where the pedestrian bridges came from, and I think that Dennis knows that, and I, you know, we spent a lot of money on a study that showed obstructions as a whole, and I just think that it's important for the rest of the board to understand how all of that came about long before us, because we had pedestrians were getting killed every single day before the bridges came in, and I was at the stage ironically when we were paying for them, and they're very expensive. So, how that partner formed, but I mean, Chris G worked on the obstruction language, and that we're not changing, and she worked pretty hard to find, to figure out what was the balance for everyone. So, I just think that it's important that maybe Dennis give us some history on how and why we got to here, see if you don't mind, Dennis.
Okay, I got two questions. History on the bridges or history on the obstructive uses?
A little bit of both.
Well, the bridges were initially proposed as an alternative. Actually, there was a proposal for grade separated intersection at Tropicana and Las Vegas Boulevard in the early 90s. And so, that would have depressed Tropicana, and it would have taken traffic and given more time for pedestrians. But that was so intrusive into the right of way, and for construction, the alternative came up for the bridges. And so, Tropicana and Las Vegas Boulevard was their first experiment in use of pedestrian bridges to improve pedestrian crossings, crossing times, not having to wait, not having people crossing while the red light's still, or the green light's going because they're lagging behind on the red light. So, we built those first bridges, and they were very successful, and all the hotels all wanted to attach and connect to those bridges. And so, that started the ball rolling. The next one was Bellagio came on board, and we originally looked at an underground system of tunnels to cross the bridge, but because of the high groundwater and the concern for the visibility similar to the above grade, we went with the above grade, and Bellagio built two bridges there, and then we built the other two bridges at Flamingo. We identified in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, because the bridges were so successful in alleviating hazards for pedestrians crossing at intersections and improving traffic flow, that we now have a map that shows potential or locations where we have planned pedestrian overpasses and crossings. So, we moved from Flamingo to the TI Venetian, built their own bridge between their two properties, and then we've added the bridges at Spring Mountain. City Center came in and built two bridges there. The third bridge is, was built by the private property owner on the northeast corner. So, that's how the bridges came about, basically, was to improve pedestrian flow, improve the pedestrian experience up and down the strip, and leaning, limiting the need for the at-grade crosswalks in these locations. As far as the obstructive use ordinance, it's just because we developed more and more pedestrians on Las Vegas Boulevard, and things started being a hazard and impeding traffic. The first one we did was with news racks. So, we eliminated and reduced the number of news racks on the strips by congregating them in certain areas every so often, and did a permitting process, a lottery process for those locations. So, the first element was removing the news racks. Next, we removed the streetlights. Streetlights used to be in the sidewalk area on the side. When we did the beautification project, we moved all the streetlights off of the sidewalk into the median to, again, allow more space for pedestrians. Then we started getting other uses and, excuse me, showgirls type things and people handing out cards and doing other things on the strip and pamphlets. So, we started and we did a study, and we did the obstructive use ordinance where we lose certain areas identified as safety concerns at corners, at crosswalks, and pedestrian site, or site zones for vehicles turning and turning movements. So, we designated those, and then we did a level of service calculation. We actually hired a consultant to go out there and do certain times of day, two weekends, a holiday weekend and a regular weekend, and count pedestrian, count pedestrians on the sidewalk, compute the sidewalk width, and determined on the speed of a pedestrian, what the level of service would be. We did that in 2012 was the first one. We updated that in 2015, and we developed, that's when we started updating the maps, because the map was about 20 years old before that level of service study, and it just identified those intersections and driveways. And so, we have the level of service, it map was adopted, we went out there and we put signs. As she mentioned, two or three of the bridges have level of service C during certain time periods and in certain days. Some of them are holidays, some of them are weekends, some of them are just different times of days, five to nine or something like that. And we put all of those signs up back in 2012, 2013. We updated again in 2016. So, there's certain areas that we did identify based upon the counts, the width of the sidewalks, the widths of the bridges, where there's certain times where there are no obstructive uses.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Dennis. That makes me feel a lot more comfortable. I've, that I remembered it correctly, but that was why, and they've always been considered pedestrian movement so that people could keep moving through, and I believe that the obstruction piece was just, and I remember the Tropicana one, I was here in 15 and 16 when they made those changes, so thank you.
I promise, Commissioner Naft.
Thank you, Chairman. And Dennis, thank you for that history, that is so valuable, and Commissioner Kirkpatrick reminding us of Commissioner June Kiliani's work on this is really helpful, because I remember that and how hard she worked on it. But, and I'm sorry, Dennis, this is probably directed towards the captain, but this isn't really a hypothetical, you just heard it mentioned, so we already have this on the Tropicana Bridge. So, I guess, I know it's limited hours, but I guess what I need to understand from a law enforcement perspective, how is that policy being applied on the bridge? And I'm not sure if there's someone here coming to address this, but has it been a hindrance to free speech? Has it been a hindrance to labor organizing or anything else that we should be aware of above and beyond the policies that are in place everywhere? So, that specific policy being observed on that one bridge currently, how has that helped the department?
So, I'm going to speak to the issues even with that bridge currently is, we need more clear signage to explain what a no obstruction zone is, or that it's not explained, but there's a no obstruction zone in the uses. So, although that bridge for, you know, certain hours on the weekends, in the evenings, is classified based on level of service as a no obstruction zone, that's still very confusing for the people walking on the bridge. We still... We still have to show, our officers still have to show that they're actually obstructing people um, based on their behavior, walking around with say like the three-card Monte and the, uh, you know, people that are laying across the bridge on the, on the floor. As far as to that, issues with, um, union activities, I, I can't speak to that, because I haven't received any complaints of that. I can tell you that the LVPD, when we do have organized protest with unions, I mean, we had four during the draft over the weekend. Um, we're very forward about having conversations with the organizers and establishing, this is what you can do, this is what, you know, please communicate what your plans are. And we rarely if ever have issues with that. So I can't speak to any issues or complaints specifically on the bridges to that.
Okay, so other than from a county's perspective, improving the signage to correspond with the policy that's already in place on the Tropicana Bridge, there wouldn't be anything different by applying this policy to additional bridges?
So the difference is on the additional bridges is to remove that need for our officers to prove the, because by designating a no obstruction zone, we're saying that it is a signi-, it is a significant threat to public safety or a danger to public safety. The bridge itself creates that.
Right, that's what we've done at Tropicana already.
Yes, so that just, our officers just need to show that that threat is there because of the no obstruction zone and the person is actually still obstructing, uh, people walking. Because yes, as, um, Ruth Miller, our general counsel spoke, or, or assistant general counsel is, we're not saying you can't stop on the bridge. We're not saying that a street performer can't stop. What we're saying is you can't create that, um, obstruction, which then leads to the crimes that we've talked about. And that has created these bridges is a very dangerous part of Las Vegas currently today, right now.
And then, um, is there anyone here, maybe Lisa, who can address the history that went into the no obstruction zone being applied to the 15, to the Tropicana Bridge? Um, maybe Mr. Sederberg?
Dennis Sederberg, when we did our pedestrian study and our counts along there, we counted over periods of time the pedestrians on the bridge, calculated the width, and look at the effect of some obstruction on those bridges. I believe we have one at the Tropicana intersection. I believe the Cosmo, City Center one, and then the one between Caesars and Bellagio. Those have restrictive times, days of the week and times where you can have no obstructive uses on those three bridges. All the other bridges don't have those restrictions on them, uh, because we couldn't calculate the level of service. We, there did come out of the recommendation in the study that you should look at these bridges in, because of the timing of when people come and when people go and the timing of the obstructive uses on the bridges, that there was initial recommendation that they be designated as no obstructive use zones in the, in the actual study. But we couldn't prove the level of service and the safety concern, the pedestrian, the, the public safety concern wasn't raised.
Okay, Ms. Longson.
So that's kind of the distinction right now. Back in 2016, when we updated that, we used the level of service as the reason for that. Now we're presenting you with the reason of, um, the threat of public safety and the, um, degradation to, um, the safety of pedestrians, which is another, um, option in the, in the code to designate these areas as no obstruction zones.
Okay, and then just, I'll just, last question wrapping up. Captain, can you address there, from a legal perspective or from a crime prevention perspective, the bridge versus the elevators? Um, is there nothing from a, from ADA or anything else we can do on the, I mean, people habitating in the elevators is, that's a problem?
Well, so that's why in the ordinance including the elevators is part of it. Because let's say you are a person in a wheelchair.
But aside from this ordinance, there's nothing already on the books to protect?
No, it's solely this ordinance for the obstructive uses and the no obstruction zone, from, from the way I understand the law.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
So one of the things that, um, has concerned me about all of this is that we have, we have unsafe conditions that persist on virtually all of the bridges today. We don't have all of the video. We have, we have enough video to show that there is a threat to person and life and property, um, present on the bridges. Uh, what we've, the video, I saw another video that was more graphic. I think it was pretty much the same thing, but it was, there wasn't anything, uh, that was shaded or kept off. I mean, we saw everything the way that the, uh, public would have seen it. There actually were a couple of killings. Uh, there was a killing where a man, you know, scratched a dog and made a comment about the dog probably shouldn't be, you know, homeless. I mean, it's hot in the summer, cold in the winter, and maybe ought to get a place for the dog. He came back the second day and scratched the head of the dog. And the guy next to him, uh, got up and stabbed the man in the heart and he died. It can be really unsafe up there. And so when, when you start thinking about it, the, the lack of safety is something that you can't catch every time. I mean, we have people that are down and around the landing place, the touchdown structure, uh, the areas around where the, uh, elevators, um, open below, the, where the escalators run to, uh, the steps take you down to those touchdown structures or the touchdown areas. Um, there is already enough of a threat to life or property, um, that we need to do something there. Uh, it only intensifies, as I understand it and as I understood what I was watching before, it only intensifies when people are allowed to, or people just do, I don't know what they're allowed to do, when they congregate, so that it becomes even more difficult to see the crime being committed. Or it becomes, um, easier for a pickpocket or someone to, um, steal or do other things to people that are unobserved by anyone else except the person who's the victim and the person who's the perpetrator. All of that is a threat in a way that undermines the safety and the notion that this is a community and a destination that people should want to go to, uh, on their vacation. It's also a threat to people who live here, people who work on Las Vegas Boulevard, people who use those pedestrian bridges to get to work or to get to their parking or to catch a bus or to get somewhere else in the area. So there are all kinds of reasons why we've got to do something here. We really do. We need to ensure that the, the entire strip is as safe as we can make it. Uh, you can't arrest yourself out of a problem like these, nor can you really educate yourself out of a problem like these. But one thing I think is clear is that the congregating of people poses a real problem for us. It isn't just an enforcement problem, but it poses a hazard. Now, one of the things that's come up is the, we've, we've talked a little bit about union activity. I think it's clear that we intend not to do anything that would adversely affect the rights of unions to organize activities and use the pedestrian bridges for those activities. Uh, street performers are a part of Las Vegas and maybe every big city. Um, the way I have understood what has been put to us is that the language of this ordinance has withstood a court review. Uh, and, um, the protected First Amendment right uh, is protected yet in this ordinance. We're not after people who would play a violin or that would play a guitar or play anything that would be performing in the public. That's not what we're after here. In fact, we, we share that there is in fact value that comes to a community where the arts are on display. I, I don't think any of us would dispute that. I'm concerned about whether or not we feel that the enforceability, whether there is any, um, shading at all that would lead to confusion about the enforceability. And I, I would give us some sense of, have we been in court on this ordinance? And what do we know about it, the language? Because we already have the, um, obstruction zone, um, language in our ordinance. We've applied it on two or three bridges. I think Dennis said three. I thought it was two on three bridges. Um, and it has, we've been to court with this ordinance. What, what can you tell us about what we've, what our experience has been with it there?
Yeah, that, that is correct. This ordinance has been challenged as being facially unconstitutional and it's been upheld, um, in the US District Court here in Nevada as a facially valid, um, ordinance based on the fact that the definition of obstructive use permits First Amendment conduct unless they are actually obstructing. So by the designation of a no obstruction zone, it means that you cannot be obstructing. And so based on our definition of obstructive uses, you can still permit First Amendment conduct as long as those, um, actions do not, you know, begin to actually obstruct pedestrian traffic. So the courts have upheld our ordinance as protecting the First Amendment, um, speech and being constitutionally valid.
So the, and I, I don't, I don't know that I'm trained well enough to understand the enforcement issues that you've mentioned, Captain, but, um, my concern is that, uh, we have a safety condition that exists today. That, that, whatever the data is, the data is. But we have seen evidence, we've experienced it. I get calls from hotels. I was in a meeting on the strip just the other day, last Thursday. And the issues associated with the criminal activity that is occurring, uh, on the streets around their properties, inside their properties and on the pedestrian bridges, movement of those who are responsible for that, that activity is threatening the core of the economy of this valley. There's something we must do and we must do it now. The, I'm, I'm, I'm not concerned about whether or not this ordinance will withstand scrutiny. I'm certain that there's got to be a way to train up so that there's clarity around what we're trying to do. But at the end of the day, we allow First Amendment speech. Your officers understand that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So a person might have. You, you need to abide by the rules, right? We, we, we speak when we come to the pulpit here. Pulpit, right, the podium? And we've given you an opportunity to do that. There will be another public comment period. Those of you who have already spoken on this item have spoken. There will be some others, I think, who want to speak, who have not yet spoken. They'll be invited to speak in just a minute when we open up the public comment period. But your officers are trained when it comes to these people who are the street performers. And we understand and you understand that, uh, we allow the expression of views and, and that can be done through music and it can be done through a multitude of different means of expression. And that is training you've undergone. We've actually settled lawsuits and we learned from the settlement of those lawsuits that there are certain things that we do that we don't, we shouldn't do anymore in our police department, right? I mean, that's, that's just the reality.
Correct.
So when it, when it comes to managing all of this, it's going to end up being a, a jointly done thing. I mean, our Public Works Department has responsibility to make sure that these signs are written in a way that convey a very clear message. Um, the police department is going to have responsibility for understanding really what its limits are and what really is and is not allowed. Uh, the three-card Monte is not allowed. That's real easy. That's real easy. We don't allow sleeping. We don't allow defecating, urinating or any of the other terrible, uh, lewd acts that are open for view by the public. We don't allow bathing, uh, in public. We don't do that. We already can take care of those kinds of things. But we could move those people along before they get to that point if we had clarity. And that's, I think, what you're saying. We need to move them along before we get to that point. And the reality is that when there are those kinds of activities, some people rush by, other people stand and gawk. We need to make sure that we create an environment where there is a safer, um, circumstance on every single bridge. And part of that, not all of it, but part of that is we need to make sure that people are moving through and we don't have a situation where the illegal activity can really fester and, and be a real problem for us. We need to be able to detect it. People need to be safe themselves. They need to understand who's around them. They're better off if they're moving. Now, Commissioner McCurdy, you had a couple of thoughts you wanted to express.
Yeah, just final thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, and thank you, Captain. Uh, it's very clear to me, uh, based on, you know, what's been said today, that, that we have, uh, some mechanisms in place to combat what we're seeing out there. Uh, I am interested in making sure that we maintain public trust and in the same vein, maintain public safety. And in order for that to happen, uh, we have to know that and trust that we are managing in a way that we can have both. Uh, and with that being said, I would like to know, you know, what's the level of coordination between you and our, 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 our properties on the strip as it relates to escalators, stairways? Um, because some of the things that we briefly got a chance to see on these clips, it's unacceptable. You know, but we can't, I don't know how, we can't arrest our way out of folks who are experiencing homelessness. We can't do that. So what is that level of coordination going to be moving forward so that we can have the, you know, the, the comfort in knowing that we're not going to have more folks who are street performers that are, you know, uh, unduly being targeted, uh, to move people along? Uh, we got to make sure that we're not having folks who are going to be, you know, lewd, especially as it relates to our current, um, obstruction zone that we have off of Tropicana. Walk us through the level of collaboration that's currently happening. How are you managing it? And how can we have the level of security and comfort in you knowing that we're going to do any and everything that we can to, uh, maintain order, to maintain public safety?
So my team has several points of contact with the resort, uh, our resort partners, be it through the security chiefs meeting, which is monthly, the zone meeting for the clubs, which occurs monthly. Uh, my COP team goes out, uh, on a weekly basis and conducts training with the security, um, teams and has that communication. We do our first Tuesday. Our first Tuesday, uh, unlike other area commands, is set at a different resort property, uh, each, each month to have that communication. So each part of the communicator, or each, each issue that arises, even, even including these bridges, uh, I've been in contact with my counterparts on each of the different resorts, uh, in, in discussing the issue. And I can tell you, they have the same concerns about the bridges that we do, because they receive the same complaints from their customers, um, as, as we do as a police agency or you guys do as commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, as we move forward, and I don't want to belabor this, I know we have other business to take care of, but I would just ask if we're, if there is a desire of this board to move this policy forward, that we have a quarterly review of what's happening on our strip to include data that reflects, you know, the, the types of arrests that are being made as it relates to the obstruction zones? And, you know, we, we move forward in that manner because I do believe that the public needs to know that we're answering a call to, to have more public safety, for sure. That is our number one priority. But number two, we have to have the data that's going to support us moving forward with increasing the safety and also having public trust within our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Sager Blumen, then I think we, we need to start taking public comment.
All right, thank you. So, to the attorney, so I'm not, still not clear. Right now, you're not allowed to obstruct the bridge, right?
Currently, right now, the only non-obstruction zones for the bridges are the, I think, the three that Dennis mentioned. So, the other bridges do not have any, no obstruction signs on them.
But, but are you allowed to just, so right now, you could obstruct on a bridge?
I mean, technically, it's not a violation of the ordinance right now because it's not been deemed as a no obstruction zone.
Okay. So, and the sign that, that, that they want to put up would say what?
I think we're looking at a sign that says "No Obstruction Zone" in big red letters, and then it would, below that, say "No Obstructive Uses Are Allowed on the Pedestrian Bridges, Elevators, Stairs, Escalators, and Within the Marked Zones at the Touchdown Structures." So, it'd encompass the whole pedestrian area.
Okay. So, it wouldn't define what obstruction zone, what obstruction is, as you mentioned?
It, it would not define on the actual sign what obstructive use is, but we are going to put a QR code on the bottom of the sign so that somebody could pull that up if they needed to know what an obstructive use is.
Okay. And is a, is a street entertainer, because of the First Amendment, exempted from, from the obstruction zone, or?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Is a street entertainer, because of the, that's expressive First Amendment activity, are they exempted from the obstruction zone?
Right. Under our definition of obstruction zone, under the current code, First Amendment speech is protected unless they're actually obstructing. So, if they're in the middle, you know, or pedestrians can't get by them, but if they're, you know, performing their First Amendment activity in a manner that's not obstructing, they're allowed to be up there.
And you also said that there's a section that says, the National Labor Relations Act, anything that's, that's protected by that is, is not considered to be an obstruction?
Correct.
And is that still the same thing where, I mean, if the union stands on the side of the, of the bridge, they're covered, but if they walk down the middle, they wouldn't be covered, or?
Well, I think it's, it's permitted activity, so it wouldn't be considered a non-obstruction. So, it would be okay if they're doing permitted obstructive uses.
Okay. All right. And, and you said that that language has been approved or, or legal, survived a legal challenge both here and in, in the Ninth Circuit?
I, I believe it's been upheld at the Ninth Circuit, oh, no, only on District Court here. Only at the, our U.S. District Court here in Nevada hasn't been challenged at the Ninth Circuit.
Are you familiar with the, the case of the, I think, the violinist who we just, who Metro just paid some money to? What, what he was doing that, would this ordinance affect that?
So, I believe the challenge in that case, the county was also sued in that, in that case.
We got off, right.
The county got dismissed because the, the ordinance is constitutionally valid because it does allow for First Amendment speech. But what happened is, it was as Metro, as, as applied challenge, it's called. So, as, as Metro enforced the ordinance, you know, that was their allegation. I believe that lawsuit was, was settled. So, the court didn't make a ruling on Metro's...
Could, could Miss, could we just ask Ms. Miller to come up and just explain what, what Metro was accused of doing in that case? Did that violate the ordinance, or was that?
I think it's correct. There was two allegations, one against the county as to the constitutionality of the ordinance, which was, they challenged it facially, and the county was dismissed on it. Then the second challenge is, how did the police department enforce that ordinance? And we didn't continue with litigation because we settled it, but the allegations were that the individual was being cited for obstructive use when he was not actually obstructing.
So...
So, he may have received a ticket when he was not actually obstructing anyone. And, and a lot of that happened because of the confusion on the pedestrian bridge as to, you know, alluding to it as a crosswalk. Because in a traditional crosswalk, you, you can't, because of being hit by a car, you can't stand, stand on the crosswalk, or sit in the crosswalk, or lie in the crosswalk because you could be hit. And so, I think the interpretation were officers, that that should apply also on the bridge. You shouldn't be able to stand there, lie there, or sit there. But that's not what the, the ordinance provides. The ordinance provides that you actually have to be, anybody has to actually be obstructing somebody's pedestrian passage. And in that case, there was evidence that the individual was not actually obstructing anyone.
So, by, my interpretation, that would be if, if the street performer was standing to the side of the bridge, playing their instrument or whatever, that, and there was not like a thousand people going across the bridge, that would not be obstruction?
That's correct.
Or even if there were a thousand people movement across the bridge, it wouldn't be an obstruction if it weren't stopping the flow of the traffic across the bridge.
Right. And, and that's the key. If there's a lot of congregation because they love the music, then that therein causes the obstruction because people can't pass. And it depends on the situation. It's like you said, it's like, you know it when you see it, the obstruction. And that's what's very hard because it is subjective. But that's what the, the ordinance provides provisions, if you're hindering, obstructing, and, and how you can tell that is from body-worn camera. And that was what's very important, is the officer has to show that the person is blocking or hindering, and that is, can be done through body-worn camera footage.
Okay. So, so what we're...
Just one, I just have one more question, Mr. Chair. It sounds like this, what we're doing is enabling to post these, these signs, and like, for trespassing, at least there's a warning to people that this is protect, I mean, you're not supposed to do certain things, and then the officer, or you, or the, or our department could, the district attorney could say, say that there's a sign here that says you can't do this. We relied on that sign. You knew that was illegal, and, and then prove that in fact there was obstruction going on, but...
Well, I, well, you need the signage if you're deeming the area as a no obstruction zone because that gives notice to the individual. So, say perhaps if somebody's sitting there and they're not obstructing, you may be able to engage in a conversation. An officer could say, "Sir, this is a no obstruction zone. It's supposed to be, you know, clear. If you, if we find at any time you're blocking, obstructing, or any of those obstructive uses, you could receive a ticket." It's to change the behavior to keep it flow. But you have to show obstruction. The person has to be obstructing. So, if they're sitting there in the middle of the night at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, and there isn't any pedestrian flow, we can't prove blocking, obstructing, hindering.
Okay. But part of this ordinance would be requiring the posting of these signs, I assume. So, that would be part of what we want to make sure we do. All right.
Just before we open the public comment, I think another thing we probably ought to look at is something more than a QR code. I mean, I, if I'm walking, I've got my pocket full, and I'm, my wallet's in it somewhere, my, my phone is in it, and I'm not, I'm thinking of doing something there, I'm, you know, I don't think it makes sense for us to make people, you know, try and figure out how to get their phone out so they can take a picture, so they can figure out what they can do.
You're showing your age.
Well, yeah, but I think it's a reality. I think it's a reality. My kids don't respond to me on the moment. There must be other things that people do. I think at this point, it's appropriate, and so I'll open the hearing now to a public comment. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Those who have spoken already on this item will, are not invited to come up. They've spoken on the item. The final public comment period, am I correct in that?
That's at the discretion of the chair.
Okay, let's do this. Let's do this. I'm going to let you speak, even if you've already spoken. And we're going to start with Ms. Valentine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Virginia Valentine, and I am with the Nevada Resort Association, and I want to thank you for bringing forward this ordinance. I heard it's an interesting conversation today. I think it's clearly, this is a sidewalk. These pedestrians on the bridges have no choice. There, there are no other crosswalks for them. They have no alternative but to cross these bridges. And in terms of who's hindered, I will tell you, it is our visitors, it's our guests, it's our, our employees, it's the people who are using these bridges to get from one side of the street to the other. And if you read any tourism blog, any review of Las Vegas, you undoubtedly come across some of the most horrifically negative reviews of Las Vegas are crossing these bridges. I can tell you, people do not like them. They don't enjoy having you walk a gauntlet through all kinds of different commercial activities. So, I would strongly urge you for the safety of these pedestrians. I know this is not the end-all for Metro. We have a very good working relationship with Metro, and I want to thank them for that. They work very closely with the security chiefs. But this is, so this isn't going to solve entirely the problem, but, but this is something that they can do, and it will help. And so, I strongly urge you to support this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Dean Catterini. I'm essentially the reason we're talking about this.
One thing that I've been a bit lax on is I'd like you to, if you would please, some of your names, we all ought to know how to spell them, but I'd like you to spell them anyway, just so that the person who is keeping a record of all of your comments can get that straight. So, would you start that way, please?
Yes, sir.
And you get, your three-minute starts over again.
Okay. My name is Dean Catterini. That's C-A-T-T-O-R-I-N-I. I am essentially a part of the reason that we're even discussing this today. It was my dogs that were involved in the murder of the off-duty officer, and, excuse me. I'm here to support all of the artists and the musicians. As what's happening is, they're taking away the right that these people have practiced their whole life to chase their dream. And they add a little bounce to the step when people go across these bridges. I was a dealer here 30 years ago at the Flamingo. There were no bridges, and let me tell you, people crossed the street then. That is, is what, there was no footage. She, she mentioned that, I'm the guy with the dogs, that the person had to walk around my dogs. If moving 18 inches to the left is ruining your vacation, you're playing way too much Cleo Quino. Also, it's, what was left out was, the 30 people that I saw on St. Patrick's Day weekend getting carried across the bridge is the over-serving of alcohol. Every time I see an incident on the bridge, it's from inebriated people. There's a young man, he plays the electronic violin. He is, made it to the final round on America's Got Talent, going to be a success story from the buskers that are trying to make a living doing what they love. He carries a 35-pound speaker on his back. In 10 years, he's going to look like the letter C because he can't have anything on the ground. But the cello player, my friend Travis, people stop and they dance and they sing, you know what I mean? It's, it's a, it's a moment. It's ambiance that is caused. Yes, genitals and fires, we need to get rid of that stuff, no doubt about it. But let these people have their income. It, it, it's not the obstruction of, they're finding that, okay, that's how we get to tell everybody to move along. So, now, none of us get to go on the bridge. It's, they're, they're, it's, they're taking away the panhandling and the homelessness. And the article says, when the officer got stabbed, homeless guy stabs tourist. No, no, drunk guy stabs drunk guy. That, that's what it was. It was, it was an argument. It would have happened anywhere. All that footage that she showed can be filmed in any city across America right now. It's out of control. And there's a community of us, we all look out for each other. Olivia, the wonderful old lady that cleans the MGM bridge, I've had to save her twice from getting her ass kicked. There, I mean, like, we want the good. I, this town was Xanadu to me. $3.99 prime rib. Now, I paid $18 for a Bud Light at MGM. You know what I mean? It's, we, as a community...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we...
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jared Crawford. It's C-R-A-W-F-O-R-D. I just want to say, look, we, we, as Vegas performers, we love Vegas, we want to see it safe, yo. And I know for a fact, because I'm there more than any Metro officer, I'm on that bridge 24 hours a day, for real. The safest the bridge is, is when we're performing on the bridge. There's no homeless people on the bridge doing any, there's no activities that are bad, there's no, none of that happens on the bridge. I promise you, me, TXR, anybody that's there every day, we go out of our way to get all that out of there. In any ways, when people are on the bridges, they're, they're dancing, and, but they don't congregate. When we play music on the bridge, it's kind of like playing in a subway where it's a passing thing. They give us a dollar and they keep it moving, and no one, we make sure of that. That's something that happens. I think it's really important that they said, things that are not, that, street performing is deemed protected under our First Amendment right, and so it's already been taken to court. But I've been to jail 14 times for street performing, for obstruction of the sidewalk. I've never once obstructed the sidewalk. All of these charges have all been thrown away. I've had undercover cops take me to jail for obstruction of the sidewalk. I think that is, they're, they should be doing anything else. I promise that, they said that there need to be, there's only one exit in, yeah, exit in, way in and way out of the bridges when we're on there. That's not true. There are multiple elevators and escalators. If they worked, they don't, none of them work. If they worked, there would be way more. The bridges are not dimly lit, especially that Aria Cosmo Bridge. There's so many signs. It's like Times Square. It's freaking bright. And I think that it's super important to note that we all want, we all, like, as a community, we all want the best, and we all want this. But taking away that, and the, the way that they already use, oh, they say that you guys are not able to enforce that, these, these things, right? But they are being enforced because we're, we're just taken to jail immediately for not obstructing and not doing that. And if there's already a no obstruction zone on the Tropicana Bridge, no one here has made the note that that is the, the bridge where the incident happened, where the, rest in peace, where the officer was killed? It was on that bridge that, so obviously, it's not working if that's the bridge that this already happened. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
For the record, Atar Hasseebullah, first name spelled A-T-H-A-R, last name H-A-S-E-E-B-U-L-L-A-H, Executive Director for the American Civil Liberties Union of Nevada. I was not intending on commenting again, however, after the presentation that just occurred, I, I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't. The notion that data is not collectible when they just put together a propaganda video to show a series of incidents from Fusion Center surveillance is ridiculous. Quite frankly, it's ridiculous. Even the notion that the Tropicana Bridge already has this regulation in place, and no data has been provided from the Tropicana Bridge to show it's available. I have not seen a non-data-driven decision made by this county in some time. This would be a travesty of significant proportions. Not only is this unconstitutional, and, and regardless of what's said, this has not been upheld by a circuit court, the United States Supreme Court's progeny of law since would deem this unconstitutional. It's terrible policy. To suggest we have selective enforcement is ripe for abuse. We can talk about the unions, but why don't we talk about the protests of summer of 2020 when individuals did not recognize that they were going to unlawfully be detained for exercising their First Amendment right? Effectively, what we're being told right now is, street performers won't be targeted. You have an individual here that's testifying that literally received $100,000 payout for poor enforcement. It would be financially imprudent for this county to do so. It would be illogical. Our request was a 30-to-60-day period to discuss, to see if any resolutions could be reached. To try to cram something through without any data to support that notion would be ridiculous. One more thing that I might add at this point, there is no exigent circumstance that's occurring because if we have 33 million visitors to Southern Nevada each year, 33 million, that was during a, a down year in 2021, and we can point to 10 incidents when there's a Fusion Center that is surveilling that area consistently, what is the actual number? Certainly, with the $50 million increase that LVMVP just sought out, they can equip staff to be able to review and actually collect data there. But to say that there is no data is totally absurd. I, I would have appreciated if, at least if they came forward and shared what that data perspective looked like, we have 5,000 incidents, or 10,000 incidents, or even the number of complaints they've received. Not one single portion of what was shared, besides sleeping, would be something that they can't already, ticket someone for, arrest somebody for, masturbating in public, public urination. They're citing people constantly for this. There are already criminal offenses for this. So, effectively, what we're doing is creating an exception so people can't sleep on these overpasses, or they can't perform on the street. If it's an issue related to sleeping, then call this the City of Las Vegas' camping ordinance, and that could also probably be challenged under Boise versus Martin. And if it's to target street performers, that goes far beyond the pale of what was said. I'd encourage this county, again, to put this over for the period that was asked for, to coalesce the stakeholders, do not cram this through, and if there is a need, they can pull the data, or at least pull their complaints statistics, to be able to show what's going on. It's, it's totally absurd to not have any data for a presentation of this nature when it's collectible. Thank you.
Ready?
Yep. Hi, my name is Travis Nootch. It's T-R-A-V-I-S, last name's N-U-T-S-C-H. I'm a, I'm a street performer. I've been playing the cello for over 24 years, and for the last three months, I've been performing on the strip daily. I do not believe the reclassification to crosswalk will be beneficial in any way because, like, all these, everything's already illegal. All the things on the video is already illegal, it can already be enforced. They got a video of, of a guy starting a fire, and they, and you pointed out they did it twice. So, what, you've seen him start the fire, let's do something about it before, before he does it again. "The existing terminology in NRS Chapter 1611 is vague and confusing. Last night, less than 12 hours ago, I was playing near Bally's in a corner adjacent a wall and a chained-off area. I was not on a bridge. I was in no way a danger to anyone, nor was I blocking any flow of pedestrian traffic. In the middle of my performance, I was approached by two police officers and told I was in violation of the Storage of Materials NRS, and, and I was already familiar with the statute and have read it carefully, and I still do not believe..." I agree with you guys. It sounds like you guys understand the law, that it does not prevent First Amendment practice. It's not being enforced that way. And, and I've read the statute carefully, and I, that's, that's what I believe, and it doesn't do any good to argue with the police officers when they come up, so, sorry, I lost my spot here. My performance is, sorry. "I obviously still cooperated fully with the police despite my objections, and while I was putting my cello away, I had a conversation with the officers and mentioned this crosswalk reclassification, and the blatant response by one of the officers was that, how is making the bridge a crosswalk going to change anything? It's already that way." So, they already think that they're, they're enforcing it properly. The officer was clearly pointing out that they are currently already arbitrarily enforcing The officer was clearly pointing out that they are currently already arbitrarily enforcing the NRS in its proposed new crosswalk classification wording. And my suggestion would be to clarify the NRS and establish a standard for enforcement rather than further confuse and already, something already confusing, or something already vague, misenforced and likely unconstitutional. I think that's all I got. So donate my time to whoever else is.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Amber O'Connor, O apostrophe C-O-N-N-O-R. And just to echo what some have already said, McCurdy's ask for data was very on point and necessary because if you have the captain saying, oh, we get complaints from the casinos and we get all these complaints, all these complaints, so then there should be data for that. It should be easily collectible. And if it's not, then y'all need to reevaluate why this is even being introduced. Because the legal wording here was very confusing of, oh, it protects, or free speech is still protected unless there's an obstruction. That unless is so vague. That is so, like, that is so subjective and that is, as someone else said, ripe for abuse of LVMPD against citizens because how are you going to tell a street performer, oh, your crowd is too big, so now you're an obstruction even though you're just playing, exercising your free speech? The videos that were shown in this presentation were depicting crimes, but was a street performer in any one of those videos? No. So this is just, this wording is too vague and it's going to hurt people, not only street performers, but also people with disabilities because it's like, there's no seating. If you want to encourage people to move along, then that is just going to harm disabled citizens who, you know, might need to stand for like five minutes or more to catch their breath because the strip is already not disability-friendly whatsoever. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hello once again, and I am Brandon Summers, violinist, street performer, substitute teacher. So I'm the individual who received a $100,000 settlement and it's right here. Also on that settlement, you'll, not settlement, the page, you'll see a settlement to the Las Vegas Review Journal. You'll see other settlements related to civil rights. Again, Metro's asking for more money and every time we get more money, they continue their behavior, which is harassment and intransparency. I want to echo definitely what Mr. Hasseebullah and Mr. Crawford said regarding the unconstitutionality and, and just that everything we saw in those videos was already illegal. But so I'm going to use this time to talk about a little bit of the history of, of the pedestrian ordinance and what happened. Because I was here 10 years ago when Commissioner Weekly and June Kiliani and Sisalak were sitting where you're sitting. And during that time, the Resort Corridor Work Group was established with people such as Virginia Valentine, who's in the audience today, and Mary Ann Miller. They met in secret to, and, and they found a, a court in Philadelphia called the Philadelphia Night Court. And that's what they modeled the Community Impact Court after. I can't speak on the Philadelphia Night Court, but I can tell you about the Community Impact Court. Its existence is the reason why so many performers are being ticketed at such a high rate. Because before that court existed, it wasn't possible to send all those chronic nuisance or misdemeanors to the, to the RJC, to the, so instead of doing that, they said, we'll create a court that's near the strip, that will, will funnel the street performers, the showgirls, the homespeople, we'll funnel them all over there and that will give us an opportunity to deal with these citations. The problem with that is that court doesn't actually function to deliver, to adjudicate cases. All they can offer you is 30 days off the strip, six days off the strip, nine days off the strip, and then we'll dismiss the ticket. So it's just, you still have to plead guilty and it's a deferred adjudication. So that's not the way, so it's actually not an effective court and should actually be abolished. That being said, the fact that Metro would show up here, show these videos with no data is laughable. If they did have the data, it would show that the destructive use ordinance is being abused, that street performers are routinely cited, arrested, and have instruments impounded as evidence with no real reason to actually take these to court and to show this in front of a judge. How can Metro come here and say, hey, trust me, bro, I would never violate anyone's rights and blow six figures on litigation and settlements? I am living proof that you cannot trust, that you cannot trust Metro to do the right thing. You cannot trust them to be nuanced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Angel Fannin, F-A-N-N-I-N. I want to speak again. There is no operational definition regarding what obstruction is. I was a late-night performer. I was on the bridge February 20th from 12:00 AM to 2:00 AM before I got arrested. So the fact that there shouldn't be any ticketing going on or any arresting going on, especially me practicing my First Amendment right at 2:00 AM, shows that there is no communication between the higher-ups of LVMPD regarding this law to the officers patrolling. I was stopped by bike patrolers, not the officers who normally patrol the bridge, which was also a red flag. There is no communication. I feel like if there, this is going to be something that passes, there really needs to be communication to officers that this is the First Amendment right, quit harassing musicians. This is the way a lot of people, especially me, have made a living for a long time. It got me out of transitional housing, as I mentioned before, and it's changed my life. I'm a professional, I make very good money on the strip. I'm not somebody that, that just is there to, you know, take advantage. So another thing I want to say is, understand that this, or this being passed will cause so much more confusion than it already has because listening to what's going on in the back and forth has been very confusing for me. And I felt the officer speaking was lying because I got stopped at 2:00 AM when there shouldn't have been any issues, got arrested, manhandled, got searched by male officers all over my clothing, all over me. And it's very traumatizing to speak on this today and I just want to let you know, please think about this before passing this because it will give a lot more rights to officers to abuse us as street performers. And I'm speaking here today, I'm trying not to get emotional. But what I went through was very traumatizing and what I seen these women go through in these holding cells was also traumatizing. A review of this and a show of data is very much necessary because it would show the harassment that we are going through as street performers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm back here again. My name is Tashana Banks, last name Banks. Who would have thought what happens here stays here would have such haunting effects on entertainers and musicians from all walks of life? I wanted this to be a representation today of the disconnect between locals and visitors and musicians and police. A lot of musicians and performers have been violated in the entertainment capital and this is unacceptable. So many artists make an honest living playing for people and providing for their families as well as entertaining traffic and interests in all of the sights and attractions that the valley has to offer. In closing, I'm asking that the Las Vegas Council, Chairman and Chairwomen, meet with me to help build a bridge and not a wall for many of the future entertainers who currently are attending UNLV, LVA, or simply getting mentored to preserve the vibe of the city and save the arts. What happens here stays here. What happens when we silence the raw talent that is the heart of this city? Let this echo, what happens here stays here, the entertainment capital. Thank you.
My name is Tyrone Rogers. I'm a street performer. We all know why we're here today. Off-duty cop got killed. And I'm out there, I'm out there every day. Don't nobody get killed, don't nobody get in fights. I don't obstruct no sidewalk, I lift a sidewalk. You know, I've been to jail for this about five, six times and I still come back. You know, this is, this is what I do. I make the most money I ever had, just doing me. I don't work for nobody, you know? This is, this is kind of demoralizing that y'all think it's street performers' fault. Like, we got plenty of videos of people having a good time. They want to show that negative stuff, which is expected, but you know, it's, it's positive when we're out there most of the time, you know? It's definitely, you know, some performers that don't need to be out there, whatever the case may be, but you know, that's just, you know, perspective about what the cop see when he come up. Because you know, there's plenty of cops that like me. I built relationship with cops. The cops that, the cop that locked me up five times is the same cop. And he ride right by me now rapping bout. You know, so. I just hope y'all, you know, just think with logic on this about why we're really here. It's an off-duty cop that got killed, you know? We not here when, you know, somebody getting a scuffle and get killed or something like that, or, you know? You know, with all due respect, I don't obstruct no sidewalk. I lift a sidewalk. I lift a bridge, I lift people's spirits when they come up. People might be in a bad mood and they look at me and they like, you know, shit could be worse. They might think I'm this or that and it put them in a, in a better mood. They laughing at me, forgetting about the money that they just lost or whatever's going on in their life. I got 40 more seconds. There's definitely some people that don't need to be up there, definitely. And that's just on good training from the cop, you know? I appreciate all my street performers, you know, that they came out here and said what they had to say, you know? Some street performers probably didn't even know about this. If they did, they probably would be here. I just appreciate y'all letting us come and, you know, speak up for ourselves because it's not the street performers' fault that off-duty cop got killed.
Thank you.
County Commissioner, Daniel Braisted, B-R-A-I-S-T-E-D. I like the idea of extending this and continuing the discussion. A possible solution is maybe we can have spots along the strip where performers could do a lottery and they could play along the strip, but not necessarily on the bridges. Now, another option is that if you want to perform on the bridge, you can only be at either end and you have a radio to Metro and you're trained on how to react. So you can stay there and play, but you're now another set of eyes for Metro. They said they only have two officers, a shift or whatever. Allow the street performers that want to perform, let them have different areas along the strip and they could change or whatever. But if you're going to be a street performer and impede traffic on our bridges, you need to consider being part of the eyes to report and maybe know how to disarm people. So that's another option. I encourage you to continue this idea.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Sophia Romero, R-O-M-E-R-O, Senior Staff Attorney, ACU of Nevada. I think we can all agree that the language as it's currently written is ambiguous. None of us seem to know what would be allowed or not allowed. We don't know if we can stop and take pictures. We don't know if we can be a street performer. All we do know is that things are already, that are already illegal is what we hope to be targeting. But these things are already illegal. Somebody cannot just sleep in an elevator for an hour and a half. That's already illegal. It's already in your code, okay? The only time this mentions the First Amendment is under obstructive use. It's not, there's no carve-out under permitted uses for street performers. There's no carve-out for protests. There's no, other than for the National Labor Relations Board. Passing this ordinance will just be a basis for pretextual stops and will affect street performers and those wishing to exercise their free speech more than anyone else. Again, we ask for a 30-to-60-day extension in order to get all of the stakeholders, stakeholders together and come up with a realistic solution. This unfortunately seems to be more of an enforcement or resource issue. We do not believe that this ordinance, this legislation, would be the solution to the problem that you guys are seeking. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, I've decided that I would speak on this item. The problem here is that the resorts believe that every single tourist dollar should pass through their wallets first and that the community deserves nothing. That is the problem. And, and in order to do this, they have hired every single elected official in this state, including this commission, to do their bidding. And so it's laughable to think that seven people here, who are already hired by the Resort Association, are going to vote against this ordinance. That's, that's just not going to happen. The, 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 the attorneys here, the three attorneys that spoke, spoke in very typical, it's, this whole thing shows the ills of American society. The three attorneys that spoke here presented a very distorted image of what's going on. Their theme was that the, that the blockages are causing these problems, that the heavy traffic is causing the problems. Every single image they showed didn't have a lot of people around them. The guy urinating didn't have a lot of people around. The guy masturbating didn't have a lot of people around. Those people aren't gathering around the fountains of Bellagio. They're gathering, they're, they're by themselves on the, on the bridges. And they come here, these attorneys come here and lie to you about what the circumstances are. They change the whole, in typical attorney fashion, they change the whole argument to something that isn't even, isn't, is totally different from what they say, they're saying. And the, it's not surprising that the police, the way the police treat people here is caused by the huge amounts of money that you're giving them. I'll bet each of these people are getting $200,000 a year at least, paid by taxpayers. And the average wage here in the county and the people that they are picking on earn maybe $50,000, maybe the average wage is around $50,000. The, the, the more money that goes into this, the more problems we're going to have. There's more violence today since they're getting all this money than there was before. It's, it's a total disaster. Until the community is able to participate in this industry, this problem is going to grow.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not yet spoken on this item? We're not going to have any second shots, so our rules are you get one crack at it. But thank you very much for your participation. So it occurs to me that there probably are some things that would, we could benefit from a continuance of this item for a brief time. I don't know what that means, but in order to be meaningful in terms of the time, it probably is like a 30-day extension. We try to move things from one meeting to the next, two weeks is not enough, I think, in order for us. I would say to you that you have the identity of our lawyers on the inside. You know of Ruth Miller, who's over at Metro. We, if you haven't already provided us with contact information, we have, we have mailing addresses, but we don't have phone numbers. So if you want to participate in a discussion or provide additional feedback to us, then I would recommend that you will provide a sign-up sheet. And maybe Blanca, you could help, you can see her raising her hand there. That lady will get a piece of paper out for you to sign your name and your telephone number, too. If you represent someone or an agency or, or an entity, then please note that. And we will put this, this, I haven't moved that yet, but I'm about to. I don't think there's any objection to doing that. What, when would we be continuing this item to? A time certain, 30 days out or so. Then we do this the second meeting. No, really, I, we all need to be here. What date is the second meeting? The?
It would be June 21st.
The 21st?
June 21st.
June 21st?
It's the second meeting.
Okay, then we'll continue to June 21st, if that's acceptable to people. And I think that there are a couple of things that I, I feel like- And, um, I think that there are a couple of things that I, I feel like saying.
Commissioners, are you making that as a motion?
It's gonna be. This is in support of it. First of all, I think you heard, I think everyone heard that there's not any intent on our part, nor is there any intent on the part of the people that we've been working with here at Clark County, whether it is Metro or, uh, our staff to make it unlawful to perform on the bridges or wherever else you perform. We're, we're not interested in, uh, causing a problem that is a First Amendment violation. That's, that's not something we're into. That's not something that we plan to do. It's not something that we're gonna allow to happen. Secondly, I think that the, um, crime that we're having occur on the, uh, bridges and the crime, whether it is misdemeanor crime or felony crime, is something that we need to address and shame on us for not having addressed it a long time ago. By, in what form? We'll see. We'll see how that comes out. The other thing is that it's easy to talk about what it's like being, what, what police do. I think it's a whole lot tougher to do what the police do. And I think that one of the things that we need to understand, all of us, I hope, is that this department has, uh, the confidence of our board. I think they have the confidence of most of the people in this community. And hopefully a dialogue will help enable more confidence, even with the group that's here. So I thank you for putting together what you put together for us. I know that you had to edit it severely in order to actually present it to us. And we know that there are thousands of hours of material that we didn't see and that we didn't bring forward. So I, I, what I hope everyone understands is that we're trying to do something that would protect us all, including, um, street performers, including the public, including the tourists, including the people that work on the strip. With that, I move that we continue this matter until June. What did you tell me?
21st.
21st. And it'll be a public hearing, so it'll be on at 10 o'clock. That's how it'll be noticed on our agenda.
And then also, um, that same motion would apply to item 69?
Yeah, well, well, these are coupled today and we'll couple them for that hearing as well. Thank you very much. Cast your votes on that motion. And it carried. Thank you.
Commissioners, we can now move to item number 66 under the Business Section of your agenda.